The Medfield Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, February 1st, 2022 is called to order. As always, this meeting is being video recorded. Medfield TV had some technical difficulties tonight, so we're broadcasting the owl. And we'll record the meeting and then provide it to Medfield TV so they can add it to their YouTube and other online accounts for viewing and apologize. Apology to the people who are hoping to watch this live. Watching that tape, sorry if you weren't able to watch it live via TV, but you can access it via the Zoom link in the meeting notice. I will begin by taking a moment of appreciation for our troops serving around in defense of our country. Thank you. Pete, you gotta mute. All right, because it's coming, that was coming.
I'm unmuted. Were you asking me to mute?
I was getting feedback, but maybe it wasn't you.
It was probably the speaker that had to be muted.
All right, we're good.
That wouldn't work with it. It wouldn't do.
Well, let's see if it works now. So although we're going to enter into an executive session at the conclusion of the regular meeting for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease or value of your property, and also for the purposes of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations, I would not need personnel to wit the fire chief. And the open session will not resume after conclusion of the executive session. So our first item here is a request from Eversource to approve, for the approval of the licenses for a pole and transformer for electric service at the new Medfield Water Treatment Plant. One of the parties to the license is Verizon, New England. And as a result, I will recuse myself from this.
Do we have someone to speak to this office?
Yeah, Mo should be attending.
Christine, if you're on the call, you should be up.
Yes, this is Christine Crosby from Eversource.
Hi, Christine.
Hi.
Good evening.
Hey, Mo.
Hi, we have Christine Crosby from Eversource, Eric Kelly from Environment Partners. If you have any questions on the pole request. So basically, we have the new water treatment plant down behind the Weilock School. It's going to, with the new treatment plant, we need to have a new pole transformer for electrical capabilities for that building and to connect both Wells 3 and 4 together. Pretty straightforward, but if you have any questions, Eric and Christine can answer these questions, anything for you.
Pete, you have any questions?
You already have electricity at the two wells that are down there now. Why do we need a new pole?
Am I covering that one, Mo?
Yes, please.
So there's currently electric service to both stations. Those are independent service drops to each well 3 and well 4, respectively. The new water treatment plant is going to become the source of power to the two wells. So we're going to run primary service to the water treatment plant. So it needs a larger transformer and its own service drop. And then we're running underground power to both the wells. So eventually, the existing overhead services to the two stations will get decommissioned. And they'll both be powered off the same standby generator at the water plant.
Why don't we run it underground down there, the service?
We're just running underground between the treatment plant and the feeds to the wells. So it's the new electric service so that we didn't have to be overground, overland. Mo's had issues, particularly, well, actually, both the well stations in the last year having service knocked out due to high wind events. So this will keep the wells functional and on the generator, the new generator.
Reliable service underground is what you're saying, I guess, huh?
Yes.
Yes.
So yeah, everything will be one main service to all the assets down at the well field as opposed to independent lines.
Well, I have, Gus, thank you.
The only question I had had to do with the diagram itself. I see one town well on the diagram that we got. It appeared that the pole, the pole you're moving, you're actually just moving a pole. Maybe you're putting a new pole in, but one pole goes away and then a pole that's got the same number is just slightly repositioned, as I understand it on the diagram.
Yes.
First question is, where is the treatment plant on this diagram?
I'm actually not familiar with where it is on this diagram. I don't know if Eric would be able to.
Not knowing which way the diagram is oriented. The existing pole is at, I'll call it, the incoming intersection where the road tees off to go to Wells 3 and 4 and cross the tracks. The new pole is going to be set across the driveway from it with the transformer adjacent to it. So essentially, the treatment plant will be kind of north, northeast of that location.
I would take a stab at telling you where the, where it is. Because of the, where you can see the railroad track and the road, that road is coming off of Route 27, crosses the railroad track and then goes out by the soccer fields. What it doesn't show here is the other road that goes down to the wells. But it seems to me that the treatment plant is going to be to the right of where it says town well.
In this instance, town well on their diagram is the new treatment plant.
Okay, all right.
Okay. We're going from the new pole underground to the new transformer. That's the new transformer shown with the triangle symbology. And then it goes underground into the treatment plant building where the main electrical room will be.
So the thing that's marked town well on the diagram is actually the treatment plant, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, the only reason I was asking for where the other town well was is because I thought that was the line that fed one of the wells. And so I was just curious where the other well was. But that's going to the treatment plant, I got it, okay.
Yep.
Don't think I have any other questions. Anybody else have any questions? Pete, I guess you do the motion and I'll do the second.
I would move to approve the license to Eversource for a pole and transformer for electric service at the new water treatment plant as shown in the materials that were circulated prior to the meeting.
And I second that, Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Murby, yes. We're all set.
Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Here, thanks for coming. All right, we will next welcome Building Inspector Gary Pelletier to discuss plumbing permit inspection. Do you want to do the SCADA? I apologize, you can stay right there while Mo is here so that Mo doesn't have to stay all the way to item number eight. Can you bring Mo back?
Yes.
Bring him back, I apologize. This should be quick, Gary.
Mo needs his rest.
Yeah. A busy, a busy few days.
Get your back, Mo.
Thank, thank you.
The other item that you have on here is a request for us to vote to approve a contract with Woodard and Curran for SCADA upgrade services. Just describe that a little bit, please.
Sure, so the SCADA upgrade is part of our capital projects that was voted on at town meeting last year. Basically, we're looking at some upgrades to our water and sewer services for the SCADA. Basically, SCADA is, as you know, that we changed our SCADA system over to a new system. We're doing a lot of major upgrades to it to make it more reliable. The supervisory control and data acquisition, that's what SCADA stands for. Basically, for our critical facilities of water and sewer in town, we monitor those and get alarms for anything that goes wrong with these facilities. Basically, it's all our pumping stations, our storage tanks, wastewater treatment plant, our sewer lift stations in town. And again, this is part of our capital projects that we're looking to upgrade a lot of the equipment that goes along with the software and hardware that's already been installed.
Pete, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Gus? And I didn't have any questions. I read it and I trusted that the technical scope was what you wanted, though.
Yes.
That I have a question.
I don't have any questions as well. It's remarkable how often SCADA comes up. It's a recurring item for us. All right, so Gus, do you have a motion?
Sure, I move that we approve the contract with Woodard and Curran for SCADA upgrade services in the amount of $300,000.
And is, who's going to sign this? Is this you or is it Mo?
I think it's all three, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. So the attachment of the main contract. We have a second, Pete?
I did second, yes, twice.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Murby?
Hi.
And Mr. Peterson, you confirm that you're participating in this meeting remotely?
I am, Osler Peterson, 10 Copperwood Road, appearing remotely. Thank you for letting me do so.
You're with us, thank you very much, right? Thank you, Mo.
Thank you, guys, have a good night, thank you.
Peace, Mo.
He was actually participating in the meeting or merely that he was remote?
Good question, philosophical. I think he has participated, and his participation has.
What kind of meeting do you want to have, Gus?
Whatever participation they will be, we will move.
Touche.
All right, now we will have Building Inspector Gary Pelletier to discuss plumbing permit inspection. Geez, looks like, at least from what was in the materials, that these have not been updated for eight years. Is that correct?
That's correct. So Jack Rose, our plumbing inspector, plumbing and gas inspector, and I met towards the tail end of last year to take a look at these, these fees. And one of the, the primary reason for this, our inspection fees for our inspectors, that those have been handled through the budget process. They, they increase just a bit every year. But all of the, the building inspectors, plumbing and gas, and electrical inspectors, with the exception of myself, are paid by inspection. So every time they go out to do a rough inspection or a final inspection, they get $33.52 plus $2.50 for mileage. So each inspection, they're making $36.02. The reason for the update to our plumbing and gas fees, if you look at the one that was revised last in 2014, yeah, 2014. If you look on the first line residential plumbing permit with one fixture is $60 plus $5 for each additional fixture. So to give you an idea, if you did a remodel of your typical bathroom, new tub, new toilet, new lav, that permit fee would be $70. That would require a rough and a final inspection. So we'd be paying our inspector $72.04 when we're only taking in $70 in permit fees, and that's how we compensate our inspector. So we also took a look at permit fees for plumbing and gas in the neighboring towns and were, were sub what the average is. So we, I spoke with Jack and together we came up with what we thought was a very modest increase to the minimum fee that would also sustain us for more than a year or two. We won't be back here in a year looking to add another $5 for a minimum fee, et cetera. So the changes really were, if you look at the proposed, is the, the residential permit with one fixture would go from $60 to $80. And then each additional fixture would go from $5 to $10. Really, everything else remains the same. And then for the commercial, and that's for plumbing and gas fitting, and then the commercial would go from a minimum of, well, we actually, I'm sorry, the commercial would stay the same at 100. So it would be the combination, electric, water heater and gas, combination gas and water heater would go from 60 again to 80. So pretty modest increase, but it gets us out of the red for many of these, you know, modest remodels.
Pete, questions?
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
A couple of comments. What, it sticks my, if this was eight years ago, I'm trying to think of when it is we ever had a conversation about inspection fees, because it's stuck in my head. There was a conversation.
With Jack Wolf.
Well, this is, yeah, this is permitting fees as opposed to the inspection fees.
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, and I think you answered the question, just a comment. But stuck in my head from that conversation four years ago was that we can't use these fees as a revenue generator. In essence, the fees are intended to offset our actual direct cost.
Correct.
So your explanation kind of tracks pretty closely with that. So that makes sense to me.
Right, this wouldn't include any administrative fees either. So, you know, our admin, you know, puts the permits in and issues, you know, issues the permits, et cetera. So the other thing is, to your point, is probably our, our per inspection fee, when this fee structure was put in place, was probably around $26 to $28 an inspection for the inspectors. You know, obviously, over the last eight years, it's increased, you know, a buck or two a year with the cost of living increase, et cetera. So, and then, you know, we'll probably be looking at $74, $75 an inspection. I'm sorry, for, I should say, $38, $37, $38 per inspection, you know, next year, year after, so.
So that was my first thought. Then my second thought was, I recognized that it was only the residential fees that went up.
Yep.
Which then led to my third thought, which is, is it easier to just have the same fee across the border? Is it, is there really, is there something about commercial inspect, commercial permit fees? Maybe it's a more complex thing.
Commercial fees are typically higher than residential fees, both building, electrical, and plumbing and gas. And that's universal in the, in the field.
So my fourth thought is, should they go up too?
Again, we're, we're not trying to, to, you know, tap a cash cow or anything of that nature. It was really the, the fact that we shouldn't be processing permit fees that don't cover our cost of inspection. So, and the fee that, or the, the fee that the inspector is paid per inspection is the same whether it's a residential or commercial. So there's no justification. So we have a commercial remodel and there's a rough and a, and a file. We're covered even on a minimum fee.
Okay.
And good questions, Gus, because I remember that discussion, because that's a picture of a hobby of mine. Trying to use, trying to use, whether it's fines issued by police or regulatory fees for revenue purposes. And you obviously see some, see some horrible abuses, as we're not anywhere near in that category. But I recall that discussion with Jack, who that was a request from our committee to raise revenue by raising the inspection fees. The question I did have is, is this purely, do these apply only when there's sort of a new, a new installation there as part of renovation, construction, does it apply to repair?
No, a lot, a lot, most of it is remodel. Because most of the residential work, the lion's share of the residential work is remodel. And for plumbing and gas, it's typically, plumbers are taking things back to the wall.
Right.
So most bathroom remodels are gut remodels. So there's a rough inspection because they're, they're updating the plumbing and the piping and the water piping and same thing with the gas appliances. So there's, there's generally a rough and a final for plumbing and gas.
Okay, but I'm thinking, if somebody's water heater breaks, you know, comes out to fix it, they don't need a permit to repair the water.
If they are disconnecting the domestic water or disconnecting the gas service, they absolutely do have to have a permit for that, because that has to be performed by a licensed gas fitter.
Okay, but if you're not disconnecting it, then you wouldn't need it.
Yeah, I don't know how they'd fix it if they didn't disconnect it.
So typically, this would apply also to repairs as well for water heaters and, and gas and all that.
Yeah, any, any, in most cases, if there's electric service to the, to the water, to the, any appliance that requires an electrical permit as well.
Okay, but typically, the licensed plumbers, electricians know when the permit's needed.
Yep, if they don't, we remind them.
All right, I have no further questions. I don't see any questions in the Q and A here. So if there's a motion, you can call.
Sure, I move that we approve the proposed changes to the plumbing and gas permit fees that's submitted in the memo from the building inspector.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Murby?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, Gary.
Thank you all, happy new year.
See you again in eight years. At least on this one. All right, next, we have members of the Medfield Energy Committee to discuss the Town Garage Solar Project. Central vote to approve a contract with Solar Design Associates for engineering services for Town Garage Solar. Fred Davis is here and Andrew Gero is in Zoom room. They'll answer any questions as well, so maybe we'll promote Andrew as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Fred.
Thank you very much, good to see you in person. So before us tonight is the opportunity to move ahead with the contract with Solar Design Associates to finish the design and move through oversight of the construction of the solar array at Town Garage. Penny Connor is the Energy Committee's coordinator for the solar work group, but she alerted me last night that she couldn't attend tonight. So I am here in her stead, I'll do what I can. Her solar work group meets monthly and has been moving this project along for the last year or two. We've been hoping to get this on your agenda. And at this point now, it's, it is an important project in any case, but it turns out that the time is of the essence to move this ahead tonight, if at all possible. I'm glad to try to address any questions there may be. And I'm glad that Andrew's on the line, and if anybody else comes online to help, that'd be great. Just in a nutshell, Medfield, just to remind us, we have experience with solar for six or seven years now. And I'd say what has been consistent throughout our engagement is maximizing quality and maximizing financial return for the town. And that's still the case with the current project. The project tonight, or the contract tonight with Solar Design Associates is to pay them for phase two, three, and four. They've already completed phase one of the work. And those three phases add up to $45,150. And we have in hand a state contract, a meter grant, I'm sorry, state grant. It's called an NEPA meter grant for $12,500, which would offset that $45,150. I have other notes here, but if there's, there are questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Pete?
I've been watching this up close on the Energy Committee meetings for a long time, so I have no questions.
Gus, you, just to make sure I understand, so the first thing on the cost, and so the $12,500 is covered through a grant, the other part of it would be coming from the town? And that's coming out of what budget?
So there was money, money that was left over from the wastewater treatment plant was transferred through town meeting to new solar contract.
Okay, and this will be for the design of the solar. What's the cost for the construction? Do you have ballpark on that?
No, that's fine. So the route that we're on currently, and what was approved at town meeting per your, per your direction a year ago, is a PPA.
Okay.
Which would mean there's no cost to the town.
Okay.
No outlay for the town issue.
So that answers my next question, that's good. And then, the, to, again, not looking for hard numbers, but the ROI that we're, since this is delivering a positive ROI from town against the $33,000 or what we're kicking in, perhaps ideally actually for the full $45,000, but at least the 33. Does that, I'm just trying to understand how this works. Does that ROI show up as a savings in the town's electricity? So if it's PPA, it's actually the fact that the town is using. I'm just trying to figure out where, how that shows up as a practical financial.
Yeah, actually, that's a good question, exactly how the PPA benefits us. On the practical side, it's a good question, but the dollar amount has been roughed out a year ago. Nick did a great job with a super spreadsheet, looking at various options at that time. But the minimum that we saw on that spreadsheet was $300,000 over 20 years.
Okay. And then the last, this is a comment actually, and Mark, you may want to weigh in. I noted that the arbitration clause in the Solar Design Associates is page four. Terms in the arbitration, Mark, I've always asked these questions before, so you can, maybe you'll just tell me, don't worry about it. But the terms in the Solar Design Associates arbitration clause in the contract that they submitted, as I read it, directly contradicts the terms in the arbitration clause in the town contract. And so I think in all matters like this, we sign the town contract and it's the town contracts terms that take precedence. But the fact that they actually were worded in exactly opposite ways caused me to want to raise that as a question about whether that's a problem.
It's been a while since I looked at the contracts, worked on them with Nick. Our contract takes precedence, it's typically languished. It only refers to the scope of work and the compensation provisions of any vendor's contract.
So just so you know, what I'm talking about here is the SDA contract says that all claims discussed in other matters in question between the parties disagreement arising out of a related disagreement or the breach thereof shall be decided by arbitration. The town contract says it will only be decided by arbitration at the mutual agreement of the parties. So one is saying it absolutely will happen, the other one is saying it only happens if everybody agrees. So first off, pointing out that the town contract, I believe, takes precedent. And I'm mainly doing this to make sure there's no confusion between the town and the SDA, that it's the town's terms that take precedence, not the terms that SDA has in their contract.
And just to circle back on that, the Solar Design Associates did operate under our standard contracts previously. So they've seen all these terms, there is nothing new. And the prior proposal was very, exactly the same as this one, except it was a different phase. So everything's the same, it's a change based, change in some compensation.
So one point I make it is a legal point, but maybe the more practical point I'm making is just from the standpoint of relationships with a contractor that's still at work for us. If there's any confusion about that, we should get that confusion undone before they start, rather than shooting people in the court.
I mean, it does say in, in this paragraph, in the conflict, this town's contract.
Right, right.
You're only gonna, you're only gonna sign the town's contract anyway. You're not gonna sign the F form contract. If anything, it's, if anything, it's attached, it's attached as an exhibit.
My point is, if you can avoid a rough spot without resorting to legal determinations to resolve an issue, it's a better way to do business.
Okay, I just don't know how much clearer it will be.
With what I just said, I think it's pretty clear, as long as we got it recorded.
Yeah. All right, I do have a couple of questions, a number of questions, actually. And obviously, this has been sort of a long time coming. The garage was built 10 years ago. But my overarching question is, if we're going to do a PPA, why don't we have the design as part of the PPA? And why don't we simply bid out the location? And let whoever purchases the location design it, build it, run it, and take responsibility for it? Why are we designing it and then going out to get somebody else to do it?
And by the way, what did you, what did you mean by bid out the location?
Well, essentially, here, you know, we are a landlord, right? The town's role with respect to this facility is we own space on a roof. And what we're just doing is selling space on a roof for solar, right? There's different models for doing that, but that's what we are, right? We're, we're a landlord. And so if we're a landlord, we're selling the space, why would we design this first, rather than simply sell the space and let the PPA provider design what they want, set it up, run it, and have us totally not do any of it, other than negotiate a lease?
Negotiate a lease and also, I presume, evaluate proposals?
Sure, of course.
And that is a good part of this, the evaluation of proposals.
Right. My question about the design.
Understood.
So if it's just about evaluating proposals, that's separate. But why are we designing this and then saying this is the design? And bidding that out to somebody else to build it, manage it, run it?
Right.
All that.
So as I, my understanding of contracting is if you don't have a design in advance, and I'm sure it could work the way you're describing, but if you don't, then you're, you're likely, possibly, probably going to have to grapple with sorting out whether you're looking at an apple, an orange, and pineapple. What's the advantages or disadvantages of whatever the proposals are? Here, we're looking for an expert to advise and say, this is a high quality, the quality you want. And then solicit on that basis, and then we'll spread the specs in advance.
Well, this is designed in advance. Why couldn't we just write the specs as we want a solar array with this amount of power, with this amount of revenue? And then we expect you to design that and tell us what the design will be, and we'll evaluate your proposal for design, build, construction management, sort of. This strikes me as it's going to be a pretty commodified project, and it's a roof from a building of a certain size. It's not a unique setup. It's basically a flat roof of a certain size. So my concern is that we're going to do a design, we're going to be part of this. Then having completed that design, we're then going to turn around and say, okay, based on this design, you go and do this. But then you're probably limiting yourself to potential bidders who like that design.
So this firm that we're talking to, Solar Design Associates, is eminently qualified to know what design would be optimal for us and for the market. In other words, they're not going to design something that, and then find that there's nobody to bid on because of whatever the materials or the size or the panels or whatever. They know what they're doing. They know how to configure.
So presumably, the person that designed it for bidders also will know what they're doing, right? The bidders who do this professionally are going to want a system that works for them. We can evaluate the numbers because essentially, we'll be evaluating our numbers. What's going to give us the greatest savings?
We have had.
The lowest cost to the town.
We have had, right. And by the way, that could, I mean, none of us here in this room, and nobody on the Energy Committee has the wherewithal to say that these specs are, you know, faulty or these specs are great. You know, that stuff can be hidden. It's not obvious where the quality differences are. Now.
So why would we just pay the solar equivalent of OPM to evaluate bids rather than have a design? My question is not that we, I'm not saying we don't need professional assistance looking at whatever plans are proposed. My concern is I don't see the need for a professional designer to design this in advance. It just seems like where you are a landlord, you are leasing space that for what is essentially a commodified product, that we might need professional assistance to help us evaluate specs. I don't see the need for a design in advance. It seems like this will get done faster on a project that has already taken a very long time to get to this point. It'll get done faster if we go to market simply with an RFP for, you know, a design, build, construct, manage proposal, as opposed to taking whatever time it's going to take to design this. And then say, here's the design, and now we're going to go to the next step.
So we have listened to solar design on this subject and to select a contractor on this subject. And I think, trying to remember where, who was in on the meeting when solar design addressed those things before, I thought it was at the Board of Selectmen level last year. But in any case, Haskell Whirling is glad to participate tonight and address that question.
So I remember, he basically said there was no difference in the design between designing yourself and going out with a PPA. You can design both the same way, get the same bit. I remember the conversation. I asked him that question. He gave a very straightforward, correct, honest answer about it. You can get the exact same system both ways. I remember it very well. He was sitting there on his porch during the meeting. He was remote, and I asked that specific question. The answer was you can get the exact same thing doing either way. I see Andrew has his hand up. Andrew, would you like to speak?
Hello. Good evening, and thank you for taking my, my comments to this is by getting, we're kind of getting out in front of the design process by going ahead and having Solar Design Associates already kind of give us the framework of what our array, what would ultimately look like. As opposed to if we were to just farm it out as a PPA with the design kind of included in that, in that scope of work, we'd be at the mercy of sort of the company that's running the PPA, the consultants that they're hiring to design the array. We're kind of doing ourselves a favor by, in a sense, having SDA go through this preliminary design phase work to, in a sense, know all the caveats and the things that we would have to look out for down the process where we're kind of owning the, we're owning the design a lot more. But and, and as a result, kind of getting a much more refined array that is much more custom tailored and not necessarily more geared towards the companies that's doing the PPA just to make a bunch of money. As you said, just get the space and, you know, not have any regard for the town or anything like that.
But it seems to me that's something you can evaluate when you're evaluating their proposals. And obviously, we wouldn't do a company without seeing what their proposal.
And by having the, and by having the, the information that SDA can provide in this analysis, that's the information by which we would evaluate the different proposals that will be coming at us later on to see which one is ideal for us.
Just to me, evaluate those proposals without having to design the array in advance. And that if you're designing the array in advance, you're alluding yourself to those companies that like the design. I don't see what the advantage of a custom design here is for us, other than just adding to the costs. And it seems to me if we want to do more of these projects, the way to do more of these projects is to limit the amount of work that the town has to do on the project, right? To have the companies that are expert in this area, presumably there are reputable companies that do this, that aren't just going to be looking to stick it to the town. We can evaluate those competing proposals based on the economics. So we can evaluate how much the town is going to make out of it, how it works from the town's perspective. And it can be somewhat indifferent to how profitable it is for the company if you like the terms proposed by the town. But my concern is if we design this, then we are now owning, they say we are owning the design. I don't know that any PPA provider, any other person that bid on it will then assume responsibility for any problems with the design. Meaning if down the road, the design causes issues for the PPA provider, we're going to be on the hook for it. Because they'll come back and say, the reason this happened is a design defect. You did the design. I can't imagine that we make our RFP more attractive by requiring a PPA provider to indemnify us and Solar Design Associates for the design. And so I think the way to do this, the way to do all of these, and this is why I think we favor the PPA generally, is to, to try to outsource as much of it as we can. This is, as a municipality, we're not in the business of overseeing and managing solar projects, right? We'd like to be in the business of doing them. They're good to do. And you'll do more of them if you make them kind of turnkey commodified operations, right? And you talked about it in the presentation yesterday about the transition from, you know, the horses to cars, right? And the transition from horses to cars, because cars are standardized, they're made in assembly lines, they can be done cheaply. And if we're going to be successful with the transition to solar, it's going to be because, as we've seen over the last decade, solar panels get a lot cheaper, arrays get a lot cheaper to install, and the way they get cheaper, easier to install is by having companies that specialize in doing that. And we as a town don't do that. And so I have no issue whatsoever with a different contractor, a solar design associate, or somebody else to help us evaluate these proposals, but I think I'd rather cut out the middleman here, which is the design, and bid out the whole thing, the design all the way through, and then have a company that's probably going to have, I suspect, you're going to have companies that do this will have relatively standard designs for buildings like this. And I suspect there are solar arrays in the world that are on buildings this size, this shape, this location. And you can modify some of those designs more cheaply than doing a custom build ourselves.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I have some recollection of Penny Connor telling us that this was the way to go is to get the, the best quality design, the best quality product for the town. So that, if Penny was here, she could certainly let us know. But that's, that was my recollection that she actually did address this when we talked about this before. I think going forward as the town, we might want to think about whether we want to keep doing PPAs or whether we want to do some sort of hybrid ownership. Penny's, the Energy Committee seemed to say that that was a preferable way to go in terms of return on investment for the town.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe not, but it just seems to me that, that I've not heard anything to suggest that we're going to get a great advantage from designing this ourselves that we couldn't get just from bidding this out and evaluating those proposals. It just seems like we're adding, you know, thirty thousand or thirty five thousand dollars of cost to the project that could be repurposed and used for something else through no, no greater loss. And I think in terms of the value and the return on investment to the town, that's something we can evaluate. Somebody could pay us to lease the roof space. We can evaluate how much revenue we get from that compared to what we get through some other model with a discount on the electricity and all the rest of it. I think that that's an easier thing for us to assess. And then we can have a sort of an engineering technical assessment of the specs to make sure that whatever design is being proposed won't jeopardize the garage and all the rest of it. But I would, I would assume reputable companies would want to do a good job anyway. It's in their interest to do a good job because that would probably make it more profitable to them. And I have concerns too, but you have a custom design. Is it going to be more expensive to maintain over time? Are you going to have issues that might arise because whoever, even if we were successful in getting a PPA provider in with our chosen design, if that design is not consistent with what they do generally, it could be more expensive over time. And again, I don't, I don't know if we would get somebody to be on the hook for what they see as a design error, a design mistake.
So.
Just maybe the, the best thing to do might be to hold this over then until we can have a meeting with Penny and get her input on this.
We've actually discussed this a lot, and at this point, this is now at pretty much the time limit. This project, the first phase of the work that Solar Design Associates did was to do the initial design and the application to Eversource. That was successful, and that was dated February of last year, almost a year ago now. Because we got the agreement, which, by the way, I would have no idea, but people have exclamation marks all over the announcement, like, it came through, that's good, but it came through at zero cost. In other words, Eversource said no cost for the interconnection. And that was, I don't know, but unheard of, but it's unusual. So that's really, really good. But am I right that it's tied to the interconnection agreement? The calendar is tied to that. Is that correct?
We have to be interconnected with Eversource by the end of this calendar.
Right. Now, the sources that we've spoken to, Solar Design Associates and independent contractors have been fairly consistent, saying we got to get going now. Doesn't matter which route we go, but now it has to start now.
Yeah, and I'm happy to go right now with a bid for the design bid build for the PPA.
It's a hypothesis that somebody could write those words even. I couldn't, I don't know what, what to say, and I don't know that anybody on the committee is. Maybe Solar Design Associates could do that, but that we'd have to ask them, and, you know, we might be, and by the way, you keep referring to it as custom. I'm not sure why you would say that because their whole.
You use that word.
Their whole goal.
You use the word custom.
Well, I'm sorry that I did then. I apologize.
So let me.
But what's that?
Let me weigh in.
Yeah. And by the way, I want to say one more thing, Gus, and it goes back to what you were asking about the line of, you were on it before. You can put this in, in perspective. In other words, a thirty, what'd we say here? Thirty, thirty three thousand or so, thirty two thousand something net that we'd be paying for design. Is that worth it? And what, where do you, how can you gauge that? The rough guess, rough estimate, I should say, that we worked up last year was about three hundred eighty six thousand would likely to be the cost of construction. Now, if it's a PPA, we don't pay that, but that's likely the cost anyway. So that gives you some clue as to, you know, scale. And so is, is it worth it to pay a little bit to make sure we get what we want?
So just make an observation. My, my direct experience is not with roof systems like this. It's actually large solar fields. And I know in that part of the industry, at least, there are companies that do engineering of those solar fields. And there are companies that are kind of the, the, the construction companies. What you, you've suggested that design is a commodity, that it's kind of a plug and play, which it may be. But it may also be that the choice of equipment, perhaps the configurations, but maybe the quality, the caliber, the capacity may be not just a commodity, but in fact reflects who's doing what. So whether a PPA with a design branch would design the same array on a roof that a design company working for the town would design, I don't know. But I wouldn't automatically just grant the, that it's all commodity here. But I'm only saying that because of what I know on larger scale stuff where it's definitely not that way. This is one where I think maybe Pete's, in light of the timing here, Fred, Pete's suggestion of letting Penny come in and help us better understand, because I'm looking at, I think what we're dealing with here is is this a design build contract or is a design bid build contract is kind of what it.
We got to do that a little slower, please, Gus.
Design build is you just hire the same people to design it and build it, single contract gets there. Design bid build is you bring somebody in to design the contract. You then put that out, that design out for bid, and then they build it. Right now, we're kind of design bid build.
Right.
And you're suggesting design build, it's certainly simpler. But to me, what hinges is whether that design process really is a fairly low level commoditized intuitively obvious thing. And it's just a question, like for the roof of my house, those guys came in, they figured out how they could best fit it. I made some tweaks around how they configured it around my skylights. They're the ones who recommended, you know, the, all the equipment and explained why they thought I should get this. It was not the cheapest, but it wasn't the most expensive, and it sounded reasonable, and so I went with it.
One bid?
Yeah, yeah, it was through, through the solarization program here.
Oh, in that case, it was, it was pre-bid.
Yeah, well, maybe it was, but for me, it was, they came in, I paid them, and they, they gave me some choices, and I interjected myself in a couple of things and wound up with a nice looking array.
But you understand what I'm saying. There was a lot of scrutiny to that, to finding that contractor and the, and the what's the options that that contractor could offer you.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't, they couldn't offer you anything. It was already constrained because of the process.
So whether that's exactly a design bid builder, I don't know. But my point is, if it's, if it's really simple elementary design work, and that's all it is, then you're, I think you're right. If there actually are some differences in how you design the array, either because there's some things that the DPW would like, you know, I don't want you to maximize the output on the roof because we have these things that we care about, or there's some equipment that maybe has a longer life or whatever. I don't know. If there are real design decisions, then it's possible you would want a designer who's kind of working for you rather than working for the PPA. So it sounds like maybe Pete's suggestion of deferring the decision, but not like stretching it out indefinitely, just giving Penny a chance to help us better understand might be reasonable.
I'm looking at their, the phases, and I don't know how much attention was given to the pricing of these three phases. And I don't know if they correlate perhaps to anything to the way you're thinking about this, Mike. So they, they have ninety, phase three, construction period support, nine thousand seven hundred fifty. System commissioning and utility closeout, seven thousand seven hundred twenty five. But I can't imagine if we set, so another sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand or so. If we came back to them, which would almost totally be offset by the media grant. But if we came back to them and said, we just want those two phases, I'm not sure that they would say, yeah, that's fine, because their phase three and phase four is two specs, you know, to, to check to see whether the work is proceeding the way that they specified it would be, it should be.
Or at least the pricing would be the same for those two.
That's what I mean. Yeah.
And again, maybe they wouldn't be the right ones to do it. This is a proposal from July of twenty twenty one, and here in February of twenty twenty two. And again, maybe they wouldn't be the right ones to do it. This is a proposal from July of twenty twenty-one and here in February of, of twenty twenty-two. But i- if I, I don't see any requirement for a project that's less than four hundred thousand dollars to be built for us to do it this way. And a major, major project, sometimes you want to do your design in advance because you really have a real concern about the cost. If we're going to the PPA route, we're not going to pay anything upfront. We're not going to pay for construction, we're not going to pay for anything else. We're going to have economic terms of transaction. And I, I need, I need to understand before I can support an outlay for design what it is we're getting with a design that we wouldn't get with a spec and RFP for essentially a turnkey operation to lease that space to the company that's going to be the PPA provider or whatever the economic interests are to do what we want to do.
Okay.
An economic return to the town, they're obviously going to have to meet whatever inspection standards they have to meet. There's obviously town inspection requirements for the electric connections and the building inspector. There's all of those rules. I suspect there are state rules and regulations that anyone's going to have to comply with. Um, and a variety of other pieces of oversight. This is not an unregulated area. This is not an area where that, that's super new, right? Because there are silver rays.
It's super competitive, super competitive. So, so there are lots of opportunities for contractors to compete with each other on terms that you and I could see and on terms that you and I would never see. That's why I want our town to be hiring an expert to watch.
That's Say, say Expert to design it.
And we don't have, I don't, I don't imagine we have time now to go back to them and say, could you, would you, and maybe they could, maybe it'd be simple and easy. Could you, would you do a totally different construct uh contract? Uh, so I, I will just throw in that the advantage here of doing, that I see, of doing a, and say it from a time to design, I always get that. Designs
Somebody designs it, put it out to bid, somebody builds it.
To me, that is, we maintain control first and foremost. Second, it puts the competitive forces to work for our benefit.
Well, it limits it, right? Because you set the design in advance, you're limiting it because the difference here, Gus, is
But I disagree.
There's already going to be two other parties involved. So the, the PPA provider is probably not going to be the actual construction contractor. So I suspect that the person bidding to the town will be the person who's going to be managing all of that piece of it. There's probably a different company they're going to hire to actually construct this. Um, I suspect, I suspect there's a construction company that, Fred, even correct me if I'm wrong, that will actually construct this, that's probably not the same company that's managing the PPA. Is that fair?
Yeah, and there are firms that do that. And then as we're seeing with Kingsbury, there are firms that get the project, get the um agreement and then flip it over immediately. This is happening with the Kingsbury project at least once.
So my, my point about the, and again, my reference is the large scale solar field. So it's not, I don't have the insight here, but when you talk about what the PPA would do to go hire a construction company, what I'm saying is at least for the other, the part of the solar industry, I know not all construction companies that do the construction for those large scale fields have the design capability. So PPA would go to a construction company that doesn't have the design.
Well, they would hire a designer.
Then that might change the economics that we see from the PPA, and we might not be smart enough to know how that all get buried.
I mean, I think we can evaluate the economics. We have right here, we have a bid for a total of forty-five thousand dollars, of which about thirty is the design. Is that about right?
Forty-five thousand is the, forty-five thousand one fifty is the total of the
He's taking
The second, I'm taking those last, and, and is that why you're suggesting that those two things would have to happen no matter what? Even if we move to the PPA route, we still have to hire somebody to do those last pieces.
I would think we'd want to.
Maybe, maybe, right? If we'd want to beyond our inspection, right? Beyond the, the inspection that's going to happen from inspectors and do all of that. Right? So it's going to be an inspection no matter what as part of the the regulation of this building, the regulation of construction. So twenty-eight thousand with the safer IFR drawings, drawing system specifications. Nine thousand for construction period support, seven thousand for system commissioning until the closeout. Depending on the nature of the proposal, the, the bidding company could cover all of that. In other words, if we're simply saying to the bidding company, you have to pay us this amount of rent, or give us this amount of discount on electricity, that's what you're delivering. And then they would do all of that. They're, the, the bidder is then taking responsibility for the design, the construction, the oversight, and they just have to meet the economic terms to the town, whatever other specs we have. Maybe we could spec out if there were things that in particular that we ought to make sure that should be included in here. But I remember from our discussion with Haskell last summer that whether you're owning the system, whether it's a hybrid, whether it's something else, that can all be, look, exactly the same. I mean, the, the setup is just an economic difference between the three. The economics vary. But the technical specs don't vary. You can just, you have the exact same sort of system that operates under any one of those three conditions.
You might have the, the same technical product. Is that what you just said?
Yeah.
But you might have very different
Well, sure, of course.
But I keep saying, nobody here is able to discern.
Well, you're not able to discern if solar design's done a good job either. So at one, at one point in the process,
So, so
At one point in the process, you are relying on a professional who's not you, who's not us to do a good job about this sort of thing. And, right? And so, and, and so our ability to evaluate that is going to be less than someone who's an expert in the process. And so you trust solar design more than you trust the person who's going to bid, I don't know about that. And the person who's going to bid is going to have the biggest economic interest and success of this setup, because they're going to be putting up a three hundred eighty-five thousand dollar outlay to construct it and all the rest of it. So they have every incentive to have that thing work really well and to meet what our economic terms are. I, 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 I do not want us to be, I want us to be as far away from the business of evaluating the technical specs here as we can.
How do you get to the economic terms? Those economic terms.
Here's what they're going to pay to lease it, or here's how much they're going to pay through power discount. Here's how, I mean, the economic terms are based on how much you're going to save in, in power or how much you're going to pay getting wrecked. And it's essentially they're going to either pay rent, they're going to need power discount because you're going to use that power. And you can evaluate, okay, here's what you think is going to happen with energy prices. So here's the amount of savings you're going to get based on this lower energy price. And then here, if they're paying rent, you're going to evaluate the rent. And the simplest thing too is just to rent it, right? Just say if you have the deal dump, you just rent the old dump for a solar project, all you do is rent it. You don't have to evaluate any of it because the company that's going to rent it from you is going to do that.
We've, we've been, uh, we've been advised by the committee that's been looking into this and the subgroup, working group of that committee that has great expertise on it, that this is the way to go. Um, you're questioning that at this point, Mike. Um, and so that I think the, the prudent thing to do is to hear from the person who is the expert at this, Penny, and, and she can explain why she's recommending that this is the way to go. My, as I say, my recollection is that she said that we would get a better product for the town out of it if we did it this way. Um, Fred, I'm concerned about the timing issue. You raised that, and I'm not aware of the timing issue can and I wasn't quite sure that I heard what you said about that because of the connection. Can you reiterate that for me, please?
Right, thank you. So we received the interconnection agreement, service agreement with uh, with Eversource. And once that happens, a clock starts. And so the project has to be completed by this uh, less than twelve months from now, December thirty-first?
And uh, yeah, it's right at the end of the calendar.
Did, did you hear that, Pete?
Has to be completed by December thirty-first next year?
Year.
This year. Okay, I, I don't know how long these take to build, but I would think that's enough time to, to build it.
Exactly. So that's what we have pushed both Solar Design Associates on, who sees the entire industry. That's their job. And by the way, Mike, I could, we could get into a long discussion of their uh, their background, why we're working with them. They are the
I agree with Pete, if you want to come back on this.
No, I don't.
Say, I've not heard one answer
No, no, I don't.
Why your approach is better.
No, I don't.
Not one answer other than just a vague sense that we're going to get a better product. And so if you're going to come back, here's what I want to hear. I want to hear, I want to see an example of a PPA provider. Okay, who in an agreement was willing to indemnify a town municipality that had designed a solar array itself for a design defect. So in other words, if there's a fire in this, in the building that's caused by a design defect in solar array that was designed by Solar Design Associates, I want you to show me a PPA provider is willing to be on the hook for that design defect. Okay?
Do you think I follow that? I didn't, that's indemnification. So you say that, that
All right, so you're talking about a design, this is going to design, okay?
Yes.
All right, sometimes things go wrong.
And by the way, if
Things that are built.
If Solar Design Associates is available online, would you like to ask them that right now?
No. No, I want, I want, I, I want, I want, Pete wants Penny to come back to, to a meeting, let Penny come back in two
This has been discussed and discussed and discussed and
But you don't have an answer to my question. So this has not been discussed. I realize, Freddie, you strongly want to go this route.
It's not, it's not
Be that you can lay out why it's going to be better, what the economics are, but you haven't made any, you haven't made the case on that
I can't.
At all.
I can't.
Well, then, all right, show me the numbers. Give me an example of, of a town getting a better deal because of design in itself as opposed to contracting out to somebody to design. Give me an example.
Everyone here is going to have to, and by the way, Pete, the end of the, the answer for your question was that we pushed solar design, we pushed another contractor, they both independently said it has to get started now to get it done by, and it's not because it takes that long to do the, this project. Uh, it's not cookie cutter, but this, this is a well-known uh entity here. It's because there's a lot, a lot of projects out there. And all the contractors are getting more and more jammed to get it done in certain periods of time.
Well, then can I ask why if, if we got this bid from them in July, we're only here now in this? If time is of the essence and Eversource approved this, when did Eversource approve us with your connection?
February twenty-fourth of last year.
So Eversource approved this February twenty-fourth of last year. We have a bid here from Solar Design Associates of July twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one. And why are we here now and suddenly this is an urgent matter on February first, twenty twenty-two? I don't have an answer to that question.
We've tried
It goes, I mean, there's a few different reasons for that, but we've Fred had insisted on looking at whether the town should construct it ourselves. So that was some stuff we were working on last summer. When Susan Mcfee was hired, and I had mentioned this work to her right about when we were going to bring the contracts into the board of select, and she said, why is the town going this route? You know, I've worked with and had great experience working with select and other communities where you don't even have to put it out to bid because select has already been select, has been chosen through a competitive procurement process. And you can just enter in a contract um immediately. So she said, have you looked at that? We should consider that. And so that was happening in this fall. Um, and then with some, so that's kind of where things have been going back and forth, just trying to navigate through some of the options that other options that there are other than just going down this route.
Okay, who is select? What is select?
Are you able to say about the
Sure. So, Select would, um, we're a member of Power Options, which is a, a consortium for that does procurement, so they manage our energy supply and gas supply. Since we are a member of that organization, um, we are able to execute an agreement with Select, which is a solar company. Um, they do this in a lot of cities and towns where you can enter into a PPA with them. Um, and they'll handle everything from start to finish. Um, so that's an option that's out there. That's something that we had looked at.
Um, and so what's the cost comparison? Like, how much more? Um, you know, what is the value add from this design that we're going to get over Select in terms of the amount of energy that save, the amount of solar panels that are there? What, at least revenue we get, what's the economic difference? As Fred says, there's an advantage to designing it ourselves. Compared the select proposal to the, this proposal, what's the economic difference?
I don't have, I don't, I can't put a number on it. In the conversations that this group has had, I have stressed my preference for a select version rather than the version that we are, that is in front of us. I, I think i- if we're looking at it big in terms of pros and cons, the risk with select is that we sign an agreement, a power purchase agreement for a little bit more expensive than we maybe have gotten if we would oh, with an RFP under the proposal that you kind of put forward where RFP provider, our PPA providers come bid on our roof. Give us your, you know, your cost of kilowatt hour, and we'll pick the love, we'll pick the best one for us. Select would be an uncompetitive version because they were chosen on their qualifications by Power Options more, so then they were chosen on their ability to provide the best price.
Or the magnitude, for me, for a ray, this is not the, the largest, um th- this is not the, the largest array in the world. Like, what are we talking about? The actual difference? Even if we do a little bit worse than select. And sadly, select is you sign a contract with them. We're off the red. Sadly, that's definitely the fastest approach.
That, and that would be definitely the case.
What is the best scenario Mike's arguing for, right?
Mike's arguing for kind of this, a different version where
But I'm fine with select too.
Yeah, so, I think there's three options. So the first would be sign a deal, select and just go. We negotiate the power, the price of kilowatt hour with them directly and then go. The other option would be, we put out an RFP saying, hey, we have a roof. Design a solar system, put it on there. We're going to evaluate on technical merits as well as price. And so then we work with the solar consultant to develop what those technical criteria would be so that we have a clear evaluation and that we take the best technical proposal, the best price. The third option would be, which is, which Fred has brought forward, is just design it, put it on the street, we take the lowest kilowatt hour price and we go with that. So I think that there's three different options that we can choose. And they each have potential benefits and potential drawbacks, I think. Um, in terms of upfront costs and speed, select is definitely the version, but there are, you know, there is that chance that maybe we'll be wishing we had a power purchase agreement with a little bit better price for us than, than we did get.
One dis- disagreement, Nick, is that we did push select on the question of speed. It seemed like it would be easy and, and quick, I'm sorry, easy and quick to just sign here and go ahead. And they said essentially the same things that Solar Design Associates are saying. You want to get, you want to get it done in that timeframe, that's going to be a crunch. And that's what's happening now. It doesn't, and, and so the, the conclusion we came to and Susan, if Susan's online, she can verify, but we pushed them both on, on this timing thing. We didn't see a difference between the two. The design work has to be done.
Except that we could have gone to select in August, last August.
You could have signed this back in August too.
I don't, I don't think this was proposed. Back in the last bad time, I think.
It wasn't.
The issue was that there was a difference of opinion between the committee um, and the consultants, the committee recommended that we hire Susan Mcfee and Nick. Nick and Susan seemed to be in agreement, at least in the first instance, that going to select room was probably the best way to go, and you all disagreed. So it sounds like the time was spent trying to persuade Susan and Nick that they were wrong.
It's not a question, Brian, wrong. I believe select, the select route is a good route for many situations. For towns that don't have experience, that don't have the wherewithal, might not have an energy committee.
Well, what is that?
We have a lot of experience here.
Wherewithal here is we're going to go hire somebody to do it.
Right.
So you were telling me we had the wherewithal to design this without, uh, further outlay of money, that'd be one thing. We don't have the wherewithal to design this. We are one of those towns. And, and my, my concern, we've had this discussion before in the past. The more of these kind of capital assets that we own, the more responsibility we have for them.
Nobody's talking about owning
No, we're talking about owning the design. We're talking about designing it and then putting out the design. And I, I'll
You consider that an asset?
Well, I, I consider if we are responsible, I've made this, the, if we are responsible for any problems with the design, then yes, we own the design. Own the risk with the design.
So you're
My concern here is with, we've had this discussion before about the ownership versus hybrid versus PPA, which is the more capital assets we own, the more long-term cost we have to maintain and manage those capital assets. We do not, in my view, we should not be looking to hire more people to manage an increasing number of solar projects that we own. And so from my perspective, in terms of the long-term risk to the town, the long-term cost to the town, the hidden costs of these capital things that we buy, because we have this issue that we've been dealing with in this town uh for a long time. Of, we own a lot of capital assets for which very little provision is made for how to maintain, replace, and own those capital assets. We've done a little better about it over the last five or seven years or so. But we're still not out of it. And so if we have sort of a turnkey operation where we are something offloading the risk and entering an economic transaction that generates the same amount of solar energies, the planet is just as grateful for additional solar as it would be in one that we designed ourselves. I don't see why we're taking on any added risk or responsibility, particularly where now as a, as a result of where we are. Uh, time is of the essence. Why wouldn't we go with the option that requires the least amount of work? We're always hearing from you how you need more resources, you need more help, you need the town to hire more people, you can't do all this yourselves. And I appreciate it. You guys do an amazing job as volunteers doing what you're doing. But for this technical stuff where we need professional assistance that costs money, to me, the, the less money we're spending on that kind of stuff, the better.
And then who's doing the evaluating if not the expert?
Well, again, at some point, whoever's taking on the, the less responsibility we're taking on, the less evaluating we have to do. We're evaluating the economics of the transaction. Where the Select apparently is already approved and vetted and seem to be a legitimate organization that's not going to stick it to us. We'd evaluate the economics.
To answer your earlier question, Mike.
Evaluate the economics of, of sort of the other approach as well.
I have a partial answer for, for your earlier question. What might possibly be the advantage of going out for competitive bid? And, and I'm not sure exactly why you're hitting me with that about this project, because I presume that you I mean, one thing I've noticed is that you do due diligence very, very, very well. Everything is, is reviewed. And I presume in that process, you're trying to do the best, I know you're doing the, trying to do the best for the town. I presume this is the best route for the town also. And this is a partial answer. It's a little apples and oranges, so I'm, I'm cautioning. But we did go out to bid for our solar before, our first two projects, which as far as I know, I'm still going to say, you know, you're welcome. Anybody's welcome to tell me otherwise, is not Is not costing us any problems whatsoever. They're producing money every single year. Latest was a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Between S-Rex and the energy savings, but as a result of the going out to bid. We have this incredible budget surplus, or how do you call it then?
I don't have a budget.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars. Leftover, what do you call it? It's the right term for it, sorry.
I don't know where you're turning up. Are you a turnback? I don't know where you're.
No, the 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 money that's available because. It came in under budget years ago, the two hundred something thousand.
The leftover.
Oh, that's, yeah, the appropriation that we moved to the town garage.
Right, what do you call it? Not a?
It's just, it's a two hundred thousand dollar appropriation that we appropriated at town, we go from the town.
Okay, so somebody at some point estimated, guestimated, that's the budget by an item. It was underspent, is that a good, it was not spent totally. Anyway, a reason, a reason was because it was competitively bid. It's not the only reason. A large reason was that solar prices came down radically in that time period. But competitive bids do wonders for pricing. They they work to our advantage. It's the free market. Why am I telling you? So that is.
Again, that is the reason competitive bid, but my concern is why are we paying to design this before we go to a competitive bid? Well, that that's my question, is that in 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 and that's.
That's what they're really, really, they're really good at this. They're really good at this. They go to market, they know who the market is. They know what a design is that will make sure that there are competitive bidders. They know how to design so that.
I don't doubt that, I don't doubt that they do, but I I.
But I don't, I don't, and I don't know that anybody here has the wherewithal to.
We can evaluate, we can evaluate an economic proposal from credible companies.
Yes, but we can't, we can't evaluate the 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 solar components.
And you're not gonna evaluate theirs either.
Yes, we have an expert who does that.
Then why can't they just evaluate it directly from the PPA bit? I mean, you're you're saying both things for him. He's saying we can't do what they do. But we can evaluate what they're gonna, what solar design is gonna do.
Why are you doubting them? They do, they are the experts in this field.
I'm not, I'm not doubting them at all. I'm doubting why are we gonna spend forty five thousand dollars we don't have to? It's not that I I don't think they're unqualified. I'm not doubting their abilities whatsoever. But if we're gonna end up doing some sort of a PPA where we're not gonna own this ourselves, which is absolutely the right way to go. And there are options where you essentially turned it over entirely to the PPA provider or a select or every, whatever. Industry term used to describe that entity, why are we taking on this additional work in this process? Now, that's what. And I appreciate that you believe very strongly that's what's best for the town. But as part of my due diligence and whether we spend this forty five thousand dollars, I haven't really yet heard an answer as to why.
If I was spending, if I was, had any responsibility for a three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand dollar project. I'd wanna pay somebody to make sure it comes out okay, even if, even if.
Five thousand dollars to review the.
Five thousand dollars.
I don't know, what if if we spread out to bids and we want somebody to help it, help us evaluate the technical specs of the RFP to make sure they comply. With whatever requirements have to be on.
Mike, you you pointed out that we do a lot of work and I appreciate that you notice that they did take take account of that. We have. Put a lot of work into this over the last couple of years. We brought this to you after that. A lot of work. And I would appreciate, and I I I'm hearing mostly from you, I'm not hearing that much from Gus or Pete. Not sure where you're gonna end up on this, but. I would appreciate the respect that we've done, the diligence.
I'm not disrespecting you, Fred.
But but you're presuming, you're presuming there's another route out there that we could have, should have.
Well, it sounds there's another route out there that at least Nick and Susan, who I imagine also are knowledgeable and good people and working hard and care for the town and wanna do the right thing. Thought was viable too.
It is, it was.
Right.
And now we're running out of time on that too.
Right, but but again, I I I appreciate the time that's gone into it. I appreciate the effort that's come into it. I appreciate the, but but you really haven't given the. A serious answer to any of these questions. You haven't given a serious explanation as to the economic difference between the two of these. Here's ten projects where they didn't design themselves and this is how much money people lost. You're, I just, I I'm not getting from you any explanation of other than you just wanna make sure it's okay so you hire these guys. But I have no reason to think that any regulated licensed approved PPA provider isn't gonna be equally competent. Frankly, they might even hire these folks to do the design. So it just seems like this is an added cost to the process that makes it more expensive. That causes the town to take on additional risk and involvement to the project. That I haven't yet heard why it's necessary for us to do that. For me, from my perspective, I'd I'd be willing to give up a little bit of the economics. To both save the forty five thousand dollars upfront, or if you gotta hire somebody to do something, whether it's thirty, whatever the number, save that upfront. And offload the risk associated with the design and somebody can just take it all the way through with the spec being this has to be done by twelve thirty one. So as opposed to town solar design, you have to design something that will then be sufficiently appealing and buildable by twelve thirty one that somebody else can then bid on, hire a third party. To then build by twelve thirty one. Why don't we cut out one of the people in that process and try to go directly to the people who have respect? That that's my point. And again. I'm not trying to be disrespectful, but I am asking the questions and doing the diligence here.
You are, you're describing something that I don't know exists and I'm no expert, so I can't prove a negative. But I don't know that what you're describing quite exists. And it's a surmise, it's not.
Well, let me ask her, can you describe to me in your own words, what is the alternative that you consider? To the one that you're recommending?
What do you mean?
Well, you said, you said you evaluated other options, okay? And you said that the option I've just described doesn't exist, okay? What is the option?
Know that it exists.
What is the option that you evaluated other than this? What was the road path not taken that your committee is is recommending that?
Well, I I wouldn't say reject, but there's zillions of paths.
You're recommending this one, yes. All right, but you looked at others.
Yes.
Can you describe in your own words what those others were?
Yes.
What were they?
Oh, I thought I did already. I mean, Nick did a pretty good job. This, the power salute, power options, power options, the consortium of nonprofits.
That sounds better to me too.
What's better?
That sounds better to me too.
What does?
The power options.
That's, select was chosen through a power option, competitive procurement, right? So that's the same.
I'm repeating, I'm saying that Nick said that's the alternative that we evaluate. I was aware of that, by the way, years ago. And it, as I said, it's not a bad thing, it's a good thing. I suggest it's really good for towns that don't wanna think about any of this. Just wanna say go, please go. That's, that's power options.
But I think we are such a town.
What was it that the power options option? Wasn't as good as as what you're seeing here? What's the defect or the relative weakness?
This is where I I don't wanna, you know, I'm at a loss because. Mr. Worland, who has spoken to you before, spoke at some length about details that he's seen that have missed, have been missed through. Other vendors who were not, you know, there are corners to be cut, is what he said. And he gave examples and I don't, I don't have them.
So you're worried about whether they would actually deliver a quality product?
As as quality of product as we would want, yes. It doesn't, I I I didn't have, it doesn't have to be a sterling sterling, but. Solar Design Associates, they know the field, they know what's good, they know what's better, they know what's what a town needs.
So so what what I mean, if this is helpful, I hope, what I'm hearing is that we're. We're discussing a forty five thousand dollar expenditure, so there's an upfront cost, that's the financial side in terms of what we're putting in.
Thirty three, actually.
Well, but but no, let's talk about the real contract is forty five. The fact and part of it's a grant, that's great, but if you're gonna look at the expenditure.
That that is a loot, use it or lose it.
That's all. I'm just trying to lay out a couple of parameters here. There's that. Mike, I think, has introduced the the issue of whether there's risk. In the in the process of hiring someone to develop a design that gets handed to a PPA. And that's a legitimate question. I don't know if there is not, but it's legitimate.
Question that I I don't, I didn't even understand.
And then.
Clue about that, though?
I wouldn't, I have not looked for that kind of specific, because I don't know how many comparable cases are where towns put out its design on the street for a power purchase agreement. So I don't know how many comparables.
Intuitively, I'd say when you hand something over as a turnkey operation would be, this, and this is like a PPA where it's turnkey, but it's turnkey. Controlled by the private enterprise that's doing things. I understand the argument not to, not to bring things into that from a risk standpoint. On the other hand, I think the argument you're making is, but the 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 agreement. You know, the terms of the agreement we would get from a financial return is gonna be a lot different, except I don't know what a lot different actually means.
None of us do, and that that is the nature of competition, right? You don't know until you.
But if that were the case, then I would probably say, but then the most simple straightforward approach is the one that reduces the risk. You know, if you don't know what it's, when, when you don't know what to expect from the market, you go, I don't know, could go here, could go there, that's high risk. That doesn't build, that doesn't build strong justifications for actually investing in it. Because you're you're looking at a riskier return. So.
No, I didn't, I didn't mean to imply, I have no idea. I didn't mean to say that there's.
Well, so I'm not looking for the answers right now. I'm just trying to lay out the issue here. There's an expenditure by us, there's a projected financial return. At the end of whatever it is we do, and I think what you've introduced is a set, is a, is a area that says it, then there's a risk. Factor, there's risks that we take on depending on which approach we take. If Penny Connor said that we come, I'll come back, come out with a better system going here, the question I think. That needs to be answered is how are you defining better and how are you quantifying better? And right now, we're we're chasing our tail, because none of us have those numbers, but. I think that's, for me, that would be the logical light of this discussion here. I think that's the logical next question to be answered.
Do it again, Gus, sorry. The logical question would be.
If if Penny thinks in, I'm accepting that she would be the best person to speak on this. If Penny thinks. That going down the path you're proposing here is gonna get us to a better solution. I'd like to know what better is, because better is, right now, the 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 liabilities or the factors are, how much is it gonna cost us? How much are we gonna get as an economic return? What risk profile are we accepting? So what is better?
Work do we have to do on it?
And how much, yeah, how much?
Do employees of the town or volunteers in town have to do on it?
That's fair.
So you, you've brought that up, Mike. So in your years on the select board, are you seeing? Work that the town is doing on the existing solar project?
I see a lot of work the town has asked to do on projects that you guys bring forward. That that you guys make proposals and then the next thing is we need to hire somebody, we need to consult, we need more time, we need this person in our meeting and all the rest of it. Right, and so.
No, no, I don't.
My question is, there's a certain amount of time that can be.
This is interesting, Mike. I do, I do wanna know such details, because I don't get that feedback. So I do wanna know. So on the solar?
Well, the solars are new.
No, they're five or six years old now.
Pretty new.
I I I don't deny that, but I keep thinking there's something to what you're saying, that there's, that they're a burden.
Right, the the, well, everything is a burden, right? Anything that that we own, that we have to deal with, that issues come up is a potential burden. But we can't just pretend like, oh, we've got a very small sample size of two systems over five years. And I don't know, I mean, do we ever do anything with them? Maybe not. They're new, they're sitting there. That's what we're not supposed to do. It's supposed to be passive, this, we're just pumping electricity out into.
That's what they're doing, that's why.
And so to me, I mean, we have a lot of initiatives, you guys have a lot of initiatives. You have a lot of things you're looking for from the town employees to do to to support those initiatives. Some of it may be good, some of it may be unnecessary, whatever it is, we'll sort that out. But it seems to me where you have one of these initiatives that I think is important. That it's taken us nine years or ten years just to get to this point. And that if there, if for this particular thing, there is a turnkey option. That will then free up more time of volunteers and employees to focus on other projects, because I know you guys have a bunch of other stuff coming down the road. You're gonna be looking for people to do, where you do have one where it can be offloaded, it seems to me the more prudent approach is to offload it. That that's just from a resource allocation standpoint, and I'm not doubting your expertise or questioning your judgment or all the rest of it, but in terms of. The exercise of our judgment and overseeing the the town staff, overseeing our limited resources. We can't, you know, where we have.
I gotta say, I gotta say, I'm I'm sitting here and it's it's significant dollar benefit. Solar, it's clean so far. I appreciate that someday something, somewhere might be a burden, and I'm not dismissing that that's a possibility.
A lot of solar things went in with with.
That's likely.
Minimal fault.
But but like.
Came down the road. It's a good idea, time the math worked, we did it, we got the S-Rex, it was fine. And all I'm trying to say is when we do this.
But I'm not hearing that from you, that that of the benefit. I'm not hearing the benefit. I'm hearing that there's a potential.
Thank, burden, that's right.
Yeah, yeah.
No one is questioning the benefit, right?
Well, but I'm not hearing it at all.
Thank you for that. Wonderful job. Congratulations again. I think we say it every time you guys come in, you guys do a great job.
Personal basis.
Really appreciate it. You're wonderful. It's great. We appreciate the benefit. We appreciate the savings, all the work you do. The town, you're a great dedicated, you've done a wonderful job.
Yeah, but it's not personal. It is benefiting the town.
I understand that, and nobody's doubting that, but here's the thing. The select would benefit the town too, right? I mean, we're not, the problem is we're not comparing one option where the town saves money and one option where the town doesn't save money. Right, we're we're choosing between two options, both of which put more solar into the world, right? Which is part of the objective that that we have, right? It's a general matter, there's more solar in the world as a result. Both of them save money for and generate money for the town. Right now, I'm not disagreeing with you that there might be some marginal difference in the sense that a a solar design associate's designed array. Might get us a better return over that period of time. So if the return over twenty years is, would you say, three hundred thousand over twenty years? There's maybe, I I'm agreeing, I'm accepting your recommendation, not second guessing your expertise at all. In that area that there's a benefit, but you haven't quantified. What I'm weighing that against is the upfront outlay of forty five thousand dollars. And then what I see as the ongoing risk of the town taking responsibility for a piece of this project. That does concern me, right? I mean, it just, and we don't know if if there's a a design issue that arises on the existing arrays. That hasn't arisen yet, terrific. Hopefully, it it never does. A lot of times when we talk about these risk factors, we're talking about things that may never happen. But I just wanna make sure we are not buying the liability.
But that's what you're doing now, because the the company that designed the solar systems that we have now is the one that we're.
No, I I get it, but that's done. We can't go change that.
I know, but you're making hypotheses that maybe they're gonna design something.
And you're making hypotheses that the PPA providers are gonna try to stick it to the town and do a lousy job. Yes, you are. You're saying the reason why. We wanna hire these guys, because you're afraid the PPA company's gonna do a lousy job. That's what we said.
Not a lousy job.
And so what I'm trying to quantify is that the, for the, and I think we should defer this to the committee, this is one of them enough, the. They quantify the upfront cost, the ongoing risk, whatever additional administrative volunteer slash time that goes into this pro- process. Versus a select process, and that's what I'm trying to evaluate, because it does seem like we have some conflicting.
We can't, by the way, we don't know, am I right? We tried this with asking select, how much? You know, they don't tell you in advance, am I right?
Of what?
How much they're gonna charge us, how much the PPA is gonna be.
They, yeah, no, they presented proposals to the town. There's some proposals.
Right, I mean, if it get, if we got competitive, we wouldn't know where they would go.
Yes, well, yes, because under that option, we would be. Sidestepping, doing our own competitive procurement and choosing to follow the one our options did, which they're, they won that procurement. So we're choosing a a winner of a different procurement process.
Next question. So if Solar Design Associates designed something, we don't know if select would have designed the exact same thing.
Right.
So we're spending forty five thousand dollars not knowing that the existing one we have that doesn't cost anything would result in the exact same design.
Do do it again, that the existing.
So, so like design associates is going to design us something for forty five thousand dollars. We don't know if select would have designed the exact same thing for no cost.
Right, everything I understand is that it wouldn't be the same. But I I I thought you said, could they? Yes, it could, but I don't think they would. That's everything that I've been told.
So here's the way I'm looking at this. We we we've tasked the energy committee to come up with a a. A suggestion to us. They brought us this suggestion. This is their best estimate of the way to go. We're really talking about a fifteen thousand dollar expense here. We're, the the whole contract is forty five thousand, but I think we all probably agree that we've gotta spend the eighteen. Looks like eighteen thousand dollars for the construction period support and the system commissioning and utility closeout. We're we're gonna need to probably. Pay to have somebody overlook, even if we hire select to do it all. So we've, we're really looking at the twenty seven thousand dollar uh uh spec. Cost. We've got twelve thousand dollars grant money to do it, so that we're really only out of pocket fifteen thousand for the specs. We're being told by our committee that this is the best way to go and and the question is whether we wanna reject that and go some other way. It's it's too bad that Penny's not here to to talk to us about this. If if we can't go forward tonight, then I think the thing to do is to is to have Penny come back in and explain. Why why she and her committee and her her working group recommend this as the way to go. I mean, we're arguing, we're spending a lot of time arguing about a fifteen thousand dollar cost to the town. I think that, you know. I mean, we're arguing, we're spending a lot of time arguing about a $15,000 cost to the town. I think that, you know, Mike, if, if. You, you're talking about owning the liability for the, uh, for the design. It's solar design associates that owns the liability for the design. If there's a problem with the design, the town will look to them.
Yep. Pete, Pete, I, I agree with your basic point. I, I don't know that it's only 15,000 because I think Mike brought up a risk issue, which is, has merit. Uh, but I, I do think that the, the issue is, while we know. Categorically that Penny has said we'll have a better system. We don't know what that actually means in terms of, you know, better in what sense.
I would just, I don't know that I've heard her say that, so I wouldn't put those words in her mouth quite yet.
That's even more important for us to know.
Yes.
Um, so, so Fred, Fred, just to make one point. Uh, maybe a bit in defense of the energy committee. There's i- i- if this, as you go down this path, you're projecting that over X number of years, it's 300,000 in turn. And if we, and if we had a comparable number for select. And over that same time period, the return was 160,000. We would suddenly be able to think about what's a $45,000 expenditure. With that 140,000 difference over a certain period of time. And, and, and the reason I bring it up is, you know, Fred, the reason I bring it up is, so why is the energy committee here? Why, what is it you're doing that we couldn't just do without even thinking about it? Just, just turnkey. Is because I think you are bringing a level of analysis and expertise. That allows us to think in a more sophisticated way about, well, there's the cheapest way that's the, you know, no muss, no fuss. And they'll just tell us what we get and it's kind of like money from the sky. Where, you know, I think that the energy committee is in a position to bring expertise to bear. This is, yeah, if you don't know what you're doing, that's what you do. If you do know what you're doing, here's the things you can do. But in order for us to be able to evaluate that, we need more information than I think what's been put on the table.
Gus, I, I get it. And I think that's, that you, you described a, a bit, the approach that we've tried to be. We've tried to take over the last couple of years. It is hard to find the apples and oranges and get them compared. Uh, but we did that, uh, Nick did a great job of that a year ago, your spreadsheet. And I don't know if you want to present that or.
No, because I was looking at different ownership models. I wasn't looking at different, um. Experiences doing different kinds of PPAs procurements. So I, I don't think that's.
That's fair, but, but we, but one of them was a PPA and that's the, that's the. There were three options and one of them was a straight PPA, right?
And that was just based off of numbers from select.
Exactly, exactly. So that was the.
All we're saying right now is we don't, we don't understand.
No, we do. We have a clue. We have a clue. We just. No, I, I, that's what I gave you. That's the, that's the rough savings that I suggested. It could be higher if you owned the system, but if you went with the PPA and it came out something like what we guessed a year ago, it would come to that, what did I say?
Yeah, around 300,000 dollars over 20 years.
Yeah, yeah. So that's the low, that's the low end. So it's.
That's the low end if you just do straight PPA, no design, just go through.
Presumably, yeah, presumably. We don't know that for sure, but that's, that's the presumption we would take. You going out, sending us, sending us out back, back to committee, we'll come back with that answer.
I think we, I don't think we had a straight conversation with that. I, I go, I don't think we understood what we were saying on that one.
You definitely know the same.
Right, right. I, I, I.
So what do you want to do?
I endorse Pete. No, I, I, I think we're in agreement that what we'd like is a more definitive explanation of. Why this is the right thing relative to doing what you've asked, Mike. Uh, that's right now, we don't actually have the qualified, we, we, we don't have a basis for comparatively evaluating those. What we have is some, I think qualitative statements that are suggesting. That the people on the committee think this is the better way to go, but I think what we're really saying here is we haven't heard. Exactly why they say that.
And I'll just two, two points. One, to Pete's point, the contract does require solar design associates to maintain liability insurance as we expect. And so.
Is that a good thing?
Uh, it's a good thing. So I, I would hope, I, I want to understand a little bit more how it would play out. But if there was some sort of a complaint, um. Presumably we would have recourse to that, um, insurance policy if it was a design problem. But I still want an answer to the identification question. I still want an answer to how, what the contract would look like with the PPA provider. In the event of a problem with the array and the question becomes like anything else. Is it a design defect? Is it a manufacturing defect? Is it, you know, an act of, uh, is it a, uh, an act of thought, right? Some act of nature beyond our control or something else that happened over time. So I want, I want to understand that. And then the more philosophical point is, we have lots of different things as a town we're looking to do. You guys as an energy committee have lots of different things you're, you're looking to do. All of, um, those initiatives that people are trying to undertake, take time and money. And so what we're kind of tasked with, I think, um, as a selectment is to try to best allocate. The time of our employees, the town's money, the, within the parameters approved by town, it's a town meeting, the time of our volunteers. And it strikes me that there are, there are things that municipalities, that towns want to do, that you want to do. That nobody out there other, other than the town is going to do, right? There's, there's not really a private fire service that we can hire. Right? If you want to have a fire department, there's a firewood, you gotta hire firefighters and have fire acquires. There's things that you guys want to do that there may not be companies out there because they may not be economical. They're still good to do. There's still things you ought to do. Um, and so when we're allocating the money of the town, to me, it ought to go as much as possible towards those things that. Where we don't have an alternative, right? And you don't, and so if, if your recommendation, I'll accept that the recommendation you're making is. 100 cents on the dollar, 100 cents per, per real dollar of, of what we want. Uh, but there's a little added cost, a little added time and you can get, you know, 95 cents in the dollar for less time and less money. You kind of pick one of those options where you can get most of what you're looking for for less time and less money. Because the time and the money of town, and I know you, you don't think it will take any time, you don't think, you think the money is worth it. I'm just saying it allocating those things across all of the various priorities that we have. Where you have something like this, where there is a market for it, where it sounds like there's a robust market for it, where there's a lot of. Private companies looking to do this sort of thing, looking to build solar arrays on whether it's municipal or other land or buildings to do it.
They are very hungry.
It offloads responsibility from the town for getting most of the benefit we're looking for. And that's sort of the philosophical point that I'm making. There are other things that your group wants to do. There's other things that we want to do. Where we could use this money where we don't have the PPA option, right? We don't have a PPA option for a fire department. Where they're only going to, well, you have to pay them when there's a fire and they come in, right? That's an important municipal service. But it's one where there's not a competitive market for it. And, and we saw, you know, this, so when we're allocating scarce resources, I think the focus has to be on. Particularly on areas where the market isn't doing it, where private groups aren't doing it, where it's not otherwise happening. And this strikes me as an area, where fortunately we can do what we want to do and get most of what we want. With much less involvement from everybody and then all of us have more time to work on anything else. That, that's the broader point. And this, this is not to gang say your recommendation at all. It's just to, in looking at it more broadly across all the stuff we're trying to do. Is this the best use of this $45,000? Is this best use of the time that's going to be involved? Is there a way to do this that gets us most of what we want, which let with less investment of time and money and risk? And so I think we can answer that on the 15th. We put that off to the next meeting, the 15th and come to a final resolution.
Mike, I want to say, uh, a couple of things to close, if I may. There happens to be a lot of competition out there and it's scary. It's. I don't, what scares me about, I think what we're talking about is that we're going to be. And maybe my committee. Going to be tasked with figuring out which of these proposals are better and which are worse. It's scary, the, the fierceness of the competition out there. They're knocking on our doors for our roofs.
But it sounds like the, the second best option your committee thought was select, but you wouldn't be doing any of that. Is that right?
Correct.
So door number two here is not evaluating our proposals. Door number two here is select.
You were suggesting go out to bid for our roof and then.
That was, that was an hour ago, um, when it.
An hour?
Whatever it was, when we were just talking about this in, in, in isolation, right? Now that, because you didn't come here and present select and this you presented want. So.
Yes.
Second best, I'm perfectly fine with that.
We do.
Yeah, I'm perfectly fine with select. If you had come in here with select, that I've already said yes to it.
I didn't follow what you said.
If you had come in here and recommended what you think is your runner up.
Yes.
Which is select.
Yes.
I would have said yes to it. All right.
You say for simplicity.
Yes.
And the.
Gets me everything I'm looking for in, in the concerns. So I don't want you to think that I'm proposing some particular alternative of my own. I think your second alternative that, that you guys rank number two addresses my concerns completely. So there, there's not some, the third process that I have just invented in this discussion. I mean, I'm throwing out an hypothetical alternative. Sounds like you have, um, not just a hypothetical alternative, you get a real alternative that seems to me that checks all those boxes.
So I, I want to get, before I leave, just address the question of burden on the town. And I appreciate what you're saying that any $10,000 or $30,000 can be spent here or there. And if there's any possible, I get all that. But I'm going to come back to a general comment that I made last time I was here. I was making it to you in that case. Which is that the.
We're my good cop.
Yeah, yeah. If you do that, I don't know. Which is that I want to remind you that it may seem to you that we have a huge laundry list. And, and there is a lot to be done, but the energy committee has, I don't think ever come to you. Ever come to you with requesting funds that didn't mean we were asking, we were going to get a lot, lot more. In, in return. And here, if it's 30,000, we're going to get necessarily 300,000 as a result. It seems like a good use of money. I'm not asking. I am asking, I am asking for us to get going already so that we get the 300,000 minimum. That's what, that's why I came here tonight. I'm going to also make sure you hear that we just got notified yesterday, I think. 179,884 dollars. Our next green communities grant was approved.
Wonderful. Congratulations.
So I am allowed to notify you of that. I, I'm notifying you of that, but I'm not, we are not, nobody's allowed to publicize.
At the public meeting.
You are all sworn to secret.
Fred was just talking.
Anyone still listening on Zoom, you're sworn to secrecy here all the time.
I don't know how you say this without saying, Christine, someday you'll advise.
Just, I just want to let one point not get lost. What Mike is saying here is you brought the 300,000 up for this. But Mike is saying, yeah, but if you went select, if they're also going to get you 300,000. His point is if they're going to get you 300,000 or if they're going to get you 285,000. Then that's an option that is more attractive.
I may be more free market than anybody else in the room, it seems. I'm saying let the, let the market, let the market compete for, for our roof. And, and our PV, and I think we'd come up with a lot more. Can I prove that to you now or two weeks from now? No, I know I can't because we've gone around the circle a lot. It can't be proven, but that is what the competitive market does. It increases. Should be a benefit for us. Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the analogy, analogy I have. I've got solar panels on my roof. I took out a home equity line of credit to put them up to install it. And I get Ezra credits and I get net metering and it's good. My neighbor didn't put up any money, but this company said, hey, let us use your roof. And we're going to give you a discount on your electric rate. And they said, great. Now, they didn't put any money up. I put a fair amount of money up. And I got a seven year return, you know, I, I did the, I did the calculations, it's seven year return. They got a return on day one. Now they're never going to get as much as I'll ultimately get. But they didn't have to do anything other than say, sure, go ahead, put it up. Let us know if you break anything. Um, so I, I think this is a little bit of that same kind of thing. Which is, well, if you can get it done without any expenditure and the thing that you get as a result is a relatively good benefit. Before you start taking on a more complex approach. We ought to know what the difference.
Not sure that it's more complex. I know it seems easier. I know, I know that they make it sound like just sign here and. You know, I just don't know in the end, is it necessarily, I don't, I'm not con- certainly not convinced. Yeah.
My comments are going to help this conversation.
I think, I think Fred just shared a very important issue with us that his opinion is that if we go this route with solar design associates. That we're likely to make a lot more return.
Significantly more. I, I don't want to presume a lot, but something more, yes, definitely.
But Pete, we don't know what that is exactly.
You can't. How do you know?
Well, you can't, yeah. And, and so what I'm saying is that we're getting Fred's best guesstimate and Fred knows a lot about this stuff. So I think that's worth listening to.
It's also faith in the markets that I thought maybe others share.
Well, if, if there was such a market, you'd be able to give me a number.
By the way, Mr. Whirlin probably could give you a range of prices per KWH that are, that are being bid now, per KWH, sorry. Um, I don't know if he ever showed up on the, on the list here tonight.
Well, this will be on the agenda for the 15th. One way, one way the other one was on there. So we'll be on the timing question on 15th. Thank you for coming in. And thank you for your presentation last night, by the way. I enjoyed it. We had a little bit of a, uh. I missed probably the, the end of it after a while. We had a little issue in the home, um. Fire, our, our oven cut fire. Yeah, the electrics, electronics in the, the oven. So, yeah, nice visit. Excellent work by the Metro Fire Department. It did cause me to miss the last part of the Tomcat presentation last night. I apologize, but it's pretty good. Everybody was fine. It always well.
You have to call out for firemen?
Oh, yeah, no, they can.
No, no, I didn't. No, I mean, the third party.
No, no, our guys came there, they're very quickly and.
They resolved.
Definitely resolved the issue and so, yeah.
Just looking at the participants and I see that Susan McPhee is, uh, actually at our meeting. I wonder if, uh, we've, does anybody?
Raise their hand, Pete. I assume during the last hour and 15 minutes, if anyone just wanted to speak, they would have. So let, let's move on to the next item here, which is our fiscal year. Twenty-three, uh, budget review. Christine, is this you?
This is me. Yes. Uh, we have a very short, uh, presentation, just to give you, uh, some outline. Uh, when we're talking about the fiscal year, 23 department budget requests. Um, so you remember a couple of weeks ago. Um, we gave you an overview of what we expected, our expenditures, uh, for our outlook. And we anticipate that we're going to have some increase in our fixed costs. What we're really waiting for on that is the final number to come on our health insurance, which we, I think have been calling on a daily basis to see if we can get those. So we're anticipating by the end of this week or early next week, um, by the time we go to the Warren County on the eighth. We should have the final numbers on that and then we can provide you with both of revenue and expenditure, uh, full budget. Um, tonight I just wanted to point out some of the key drivers in the fiscal year 23 town department request that we turned over to you last week. And as I discussed then, uh, some of the goals in working with the department heads were the restoration of three positions. And those were not filled either due to the hiring freeze or layoffs we had in fiscal year 21 when we were trying to accommodate, uh, our COVID budget. And those were two part-time positions. Uh, one was not filled due to the library retirement and we had a layoff in the accounting department. And then we also had a full-time position in DPW that was not filled when we had a retirement. Um, so this fiscal year 23 budget is looking for the restoration of those positions. Um, one of the other key drivers in this budget are the new positions that we are proposing. And we are proposing a full-time position in DPW. This is the position we talked about a few weeks ago. Um, that we have talked about repeatedly for the last five or six years, both with the Warren Committee, the Board of Selectmen and the Personnel Board. Um, the town clerk as an elected official is proposing in her budget, uh, a part-time position. And she's prepared to come have that conversation with you. We're also looking to put two part-time employees at the transfer station. And our plan in working with Mo on that is we're going to eliminate the police detail that we've had, uh, uh, the transfer station. And I don't know if you've seen the, uh, wooden week, we don't like to call it the shack, but the shed, um, greeting entrance. DPW has constructed that and we are proposing to put that at the entrance to the transfer station and have that staffed. So that we can provide an increase in customer service, um, as well as assistance to people. And I think if we're allowed to, uh, use our credit cards to buy things at bake sales, we should be able to get transfer solutions stickers at the transfer station. So our long-term, uh, goal is to increase what we can do at the transfer station, uh, in terms of other things that we may be able to dispose of as well. And then to draw your attention to the public health nurse. In last year's budget, uh, the fiscal year 22 budget, we funded, uh, the physician at halftime, 30. In last year's budget, the fiscal year 22 budget, we funded the physician at halftime, 37 and a half, and we used our ARPA funding for the remainder of that balance. This year, you'll see in the fiscal year 23 budget, it's fully funded through the tax levy. However, we will offset that, offset that with any ARPA for COVID costs. So we can only use that if the pandemic continues and Ms. Healy continues to work on COVID and contact tracing, we'd be able to do that for ARPA. So with the intention and the optimism that we're coming to an end on that, we have fully funded the health nurse within our budget.
Do we track the COVID, the COVID-19 hours out of the timesheet?
She's keeping track of that. Yeah. And I would say right now it's 100% of her time. Both tracking contact tracing for town employees as well as residents. And I believe the board of health voted tonight to continue the contact tracing where Desi has stopped contact tracing for the schools and some of the other towns have stopped contact tracing. Our board of health would like to continue that to try and stop the spread. So just to give you an overall summary, our proposal for our budget request is an increase of just under 500,000 or 4.1% budget increase. And we've just given you the last five years to show what happened really in the fiscal year 21 and 22 budget. The fiscal year 23 budget also assumes that we are including a 2% cost of living increase and merit for all of our non-union employees. And I would caution you that we are still bargaining for police and fire, and we have not included the amount of those contracts in here. And then ARPA funding, I explained this rather quickly to you last week, so I wanted to include this for you to review. But as I mentioned, we are in a disagreement over the county as to how we can use our ARPA funding. There was a memo that came in very late tonight that you will see. They're only proposing to allow us 261,000 dollars of revenue replacement through our ARPA funding. So.
That's, that's still hooked to that $10 million.
The 10 million. Yeah. So they're saying the county is, is limited to a 10 million revenue loss and they are going to divide up what each city and town could do based on population. So they actually have a calculation in there.
And Christine, the issue there is at the county's interpretation of the federal government's final rulings? Or is it the treasury, is it the actual wording of the treasury department's final ruling being not useful?
I think the county would tell you their interpretation of the final rule is that they are limited to a $10 million.
And is the congressional delegation confirmed that the?
They're working with us.
They're still working.
They're still working on it. And obviously, once we receive that memo tonight, that's already been sent to them for consideration. So we're still working, obviously, with county and the delegation. And really, I think the fundamental issue is fairness in that we are being held to a different standard than other cities and towns in Massachusetts. And that's incredibly unfair to a small town like us.
If that $10 million limit does apply to the county, that suggests to me that there's money in the amount that came to the county that wouldn't be attributed to this revenue loss. Where does it go?
So they're saying that we can have all of our money minus, I think that's two or three percent that they're charging us for management of the funds. We are allowed to spend the remainder of our money, but we have to spell it on, spend it on the other eligible categories that are in that final rule. So we could spend it on, if COVID continued, we could hire five more public health nurses. We can spend it on water and sewer. We can spend it on different infrastructure projects. But the revenue replacement category is the most flexible for a town like us.
Chris, can we spend it on the, the well treatment plant that we're doing, that we're already committed to spending millions on?
You're not allowed to spend it on any, any, on debt service since that project has already been, the debt has already been issued for it. But future water and sewer projects wouldn't be eligible.
Let me ask the question a different way. If we only got the 261,000 here, do we have enough other legitimate reasons that would qualify to completely absorb the amount of money that was targeted to Medfield?
We're still doing that analysis.
Because my real question was if we don't, where's that money go?
Well, that's, I hate to create projects just to be able to spend that money. I think we need flexibility to spend it the way we would like to spend it. And I know there are several other towns who are in the Norfolk County who feel that same way as well. So. And we'll expect you to care for that position when you are officially on the Norfolk County advisor board.
Trying to figure out how to show up at the first meeting. Is it a nice guy or nasty?
And so we'll continue to work with that. And once we have that finalized, we'll be able to present you with our, our spending plan. And I think we'll continue to do that analysis and move forward as if, you know, a plan A and a plan B. And then just to provide you with our stated update, the cherry sheets were released. Overall, our stated aid increase to state aid increase to the town Medfield was 1.18%. Our chapter 78 was 1.1, 1.15%. So statewide, most cities and towns received an 8.8% increase and we're so our unrestricted general government aid did grow up to 2.7% as predicted and spelled out the governor at the MMA conference. And I knew you would not be pleased with. So our next steps in the budget process, we will finalize, once we get our fixed cost members, we will finalize and give the full budget both to the board of selectmen and the warrant committee. We'll split that later on in February, once we get those final costs in. And obviously, we'll prepare our, our current capital, we'll have our final capital budget meeting and present that final budget to you as well. Here, we provided a summary budget for you. So if there are any questions regarding specific line items or specific departments, we're more than happy to invite those department heads in to come talk to you or we can provide you an analysis of that as well.
So one additional DPW person, this is essentially sort of the assistant director position that.
Correct. Yeah. We're still working on the, on the final language with Mo and where that position would be the most helpful to him.
I know that's been something we've been trying to do for a while. So try to give Mo a little more time on some of these longer term.
There were some big projects coming, coming down the road. We really want to launch the sidewalk pavement management. We have the 109 reconstruction. We've still been talking about North Street for years. It's hard when you're doing the day-to-day operations to take the time out to do that long-term plan.
Yeah, we're going to take advantage of Mo while we have him.
We'd like to keep him.
And does that discussion, does that also cover the updates from you regarding the American Rescue Plan Act, federal funds, discussion of Norfolk County determinations and eligible uses of the funds?
Correct. I'm still very angry.
Status is still mad.
I'm still mad.
So. And then the next item is SED housing's request for us to approve a 5% rental increase for current tenants and property-specific maximum rents for vacant units at Medfield Meadows and Hillside Village.
So I spoke to the Department of Housing and Community Development today, and they said the board of selectmen are within their right to not agree to a rental increase at the property.
This is just on the affordables. Right. So it applies to that applies to six units at Medfield Meadows and four units at. I'm still a no on this for now. At least this year, given how everything is shaking out, with respect to the folks in that unit, I can be persuaded otherwise, but I don't see the need to approve this. Rival is been frozen for a few years. The general matter, don't think. You know, could we gotta be over-regulating the rents, but it seems like it's still not an opportune time for it.
I guess we'll do this from backwards. I I have a hard time drawing the line between having the authority to say no and finding the rationale for saying no. And in particular with, and I don't have any rental property. I don't own stuff. And certainly we don't have like rent control agencies here in town that are, you know, that kind of artificially distort markets. The problem that I have is that there have been, there have been freezes on this for a couple of years and I'm I actually don't have a good basis to say when it would be time to do it or when it wouldn't be time to do it. As I said, I think the product, the project itself, the developer has been a good developer. I guess for me, I find, I, right now I find the rationale, I find it hard to find the rationale to say no, other than we can. And given the freeze, I'm still probably predisposed to say yes. I wouldn't, you know, if we'd been trundling along every year with this kind of a thing, I'm a little disappointed that there wasn't just a little more editorial commentary from DHCD around, gee, you know, you have the authority to not do that. And 95% of other towns still feel like it's time to hold the, the rents down. Clearly, anybody that's renting thinks it's certainly time to keep holding the rents down. Anybody that's a developer thinks it's clearly time to open it back up. This is an increase that's within the parameters that DHCD allows. So we're not kind of, you know, going outside of the, the normal limits that the state agency that's charged with making sure that rents are affordable thinks is reasonable. So I struggle to say no because of the freeze. So I'm still a yes.
Steve?
So Chris, I'm, I'm sort of, I, I've got no great feelings about this one way or the other. And so I was wondering if you or Nick had a recommendation for the select board on this?
I don't have an unofficial recommendation. You know, I, I tried to probe DHCD for more information, you know, what happens? Are there other towns that are saying no? They gave me a general, there's been a few towns, a few cities that have pushed back and said no, but they wouldn't give me any other additional information. You know, I see both sides of it, but I, the rents are going up in April when the new income limits come out in April. So there's also an opportunity at that time as well.
I would say yes, to your point. I mean, my concern here is, obviously the burdens of the economic troubles that were caused by the COVID-19 pandemic and various government responses to it were unevenly distributed, that people lower on the income scale did a lot worse than people higher up on the income scale. Various supports that have been offered for people at the lower end of the income scale have been withdrawn by other levels of government. I don't get any sense from either of these developers, but they're cutting it particularly close in the sense that their own economic fortunes are at great risk if they don't get an increase at this point. And while I generally am a market-oriented person, I mean, there is no market that exists that is more distorted by government regulations, government subsidies, government fiscal monetary policy, the real estate market. And so, you know, I, I bristle a little bit, you know, at sort of selective, selective invocation of market there because the whole reason we are where we are is because of variety of distortions of whatever the natural market would be for buyers, sellers and builders in parks. And those distortions, not so bad. I don't speak, say distortion as a necessarily a pejorative, but just the reality that there's great restrictions on supply. There's great fiscal support to certain kinds of buyers and a lot of others that certainly drive up prices. And we've seen the market have gone up really high. So my, my view remains that, that I don't see a pressing need to say yes at this point. It's not a matter of saying no just because we can. But it's mostly, it's a modest help that we can offer to a relatively small number of people who are likely, you know, among the most disadvantaged people in our community probably have challenges. Let me hear that. We can't necessarily appreciate and would certainly appreciate kind of another year without a rental increase. I know I've definitely heard from people, spoken to people who live at the park and other places who've had a hard time with the rental increases that have happened there or even with the parameters that are provided by DHCD and by those formulas. And so that, that's why I'm still a no. And I think we should say no to this at least for now, and if you revisit it down the line.
Christine, you said that in April, the income limits are changing, and so there's another chance to change it then?
There is a chance at that point they could, they could raise the rents based on the new.
Then what I would suggest.
Couldn't hear you guys. I'm sorry.
I, I asked, Christine had mentioned that the new income.
I heard that. Yeah. And then you said something.
I, I think all I said was so there'd be a chance to adjust the, the rent. She said yes.
I'm coming down on the side of the tenants, I guess, to say no to the increase.
In light of, in light of, in the interest of getting to a decision in light, I mean, I understand the argument Pete's, Mike's making. And in light of the fact that April presents another time to revisit this, I'm willing to reverse and support the no.
Be a motion or a disagree?
I, I think just a motion. I'll go back and talk to David Cashman and explain our, our conversation and see if we can revisit it in April.
Okay. So I move that we reject the request for the rental increase as requested by Medfield Meadows Development.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mervy, yes.
Excuse me. I think there's a second property involved here.
Village and Medfield Meadows both.
Oh, yeah. Med, Medfield Meadows and Hillside Village.
Mr. Peterson? Smurvy?
Yes.
My next request to vote to appoint, is it Arroyo or Rougeau?
Arroyo.
Vote to appoint Officer Robert Arroyo as a new police officer for the town of Medfield. He's a transfer.
He's a transfer coming from MBTA Transit.
And he is, would basically be able to start.
Yes.
Immediately.
Yes.
Through the, through the category.
We are, yep, all that's done. We're pending all of his fiscal and that information right now, but we should be ready to go.
This will bring us to full.
Yep. I move that we appoint Officer Robert Arroyo as a new police officer for the town of Medfield.
Mr. Peterson? Mervy?
I.
And Maru Chigai. Next, a red request to approve a contract with CIA Technologies for Tax Map Maintenance Services for Calendary year 2021 data.
This is an annual contract. You saw the first one last year. This is for maintenance of the assessors GIS.
Any questions, Peter, Gus?
I, I have three observations and Christine, if you can just confirm those observations are not important. In the, in the description, scope of services, under compilation, item two says CIA shall review all title contained fees to make any required changes. Mark, not applicable. Is that because we do it through some other process or? There's three places where it says not applicable, and I was just curious why those particular.
Their standard renewal that they provide to all communities and we only use some of their services.
So that's, that's delivered on our part that we don't want them to do that.
Yes, they, that, they did that for us.
Okay. Okay. And they don't, we don't want any computer map index services?
Correct. No, we don't use their map itself or a map index.
So that's why we're not using their map. We don't need the map index because we have our own index. That was the issue. And then on the next page, responsibility to the client, the client shall provide a copy of each deed. So I guess if we don't want them to do the deed stuff, then we don't have to provide them with a copy, which is why that's not clear. Okay. Those are my only questions.
All right, good motion?
Yep. I move that we Oh, no, I have one more. Page two, page two, sorry. The wrong thing. It's page, not page two. Page two, contract. It has to do with the standard of care. Where are we? Here we are. No. Page two on the contract standard of care. It says that the contractor will endeavor to exercise the standard care. First question mark, I guess this is another question for you. First is, it uses the word will. Second one is to meet the standard of care. It's basically, as I read, it just says that perhaps they'll have to try. They don't actually have to meet a standard of care. And I looked at the others, I looked at other town contracts we had. And we don't, we say they shall meet the standard. They won't just endeavor.
Where are you guys?
It's on page two of the, of the town contract. Number, yeah, number eight, contractor standard of care. Nobody expects people who aren't lawyers to go through these contracts like this. In providing service that is agreement, the contract. In providing services, that is agreement, the contract contractor will endeavor to perform in a manner consistent with that degree of care. As we do the Clint Eastwood movie where the Indian says something about this, it's like this. We will persevere. Yeah, it's like, it, it shouldn't be shall make that. Right?
Just be shall perform. Yeah, you know.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with you in, in, in that narrow scope, but the fact is, is language and other provisions, it makes it very clear that they'll, they'll do everything that they, that's spelled out in the scope of work and there are strict requirements.
What worries me, Mark, is this is our town standard contract. And I don't actually normally go line by line on all this stuff. It happens to be standard of care is one thing I do look at. Um, this is not what we normally have in our standard contract, so that's a little scary. If that crept in here, seems like it should be the standard terms.
We'll review that.
We'll review, we'll make that change for this one, and then we'll take a look at
Okay.
some recent ones, just to make sure we're all using these words on the same document.
All right.
I mean, solar design has it.
Yeah.
They have the usual language there, but that's the shall provide, you know.
And that's, that's typically the, I don't know where the endeavor came from.
So you're gonna correct that?
Yeah.
Okay, you, uh, I'm happy to approve it. We'd be understanding that it's changed.
Yeah, that's one of them.
Okay. Ready for a motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I move that we approve the contract with C I I Technologies for Tax Map Maintenance Services for calendar year twenty twenty-two, twenty, twenty twenty-one data. Uh, with the provision that the contractor's standard of care con, uh, paragraph, the uh, amended to indicate that they shall perform uh to the standard of care called out in that contract.
Um, in favor of Mr. Peterson? Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy.
All right.
Uh, next consent agenda, Kristen Williams requests approval for the seventh annual Hunter's Run Five K to be held on April second.
It's actually gonna be April third. Yes.
I move that we approve the request for the seventh annual Hunter's Run Five K to be held on April third, twenty twenty-two.
All in favor of Mr. Peterson? Mr. Murby?
Yes.
And Mr. Murphy.
All right.
Minutes we have none, town administrator updates.
Uh, just a reminder that uh Scott McDermott, town moderator, is seeking members for the school building committee by law review committee. Uh, you can email him uh through the town's website, uh, if you are interested. Um. Mary Benaldi, town clerk, wanted me to remind everybody that nomination papers are due back on February seventh. Next Tuesday, we are actually not meeting, so first Tuesday, we haven't met in a while, uh, but you are invited to uh Rep. Garlick's annual reports to the community on Tuesday evening. And then just uh thank you to the Medfield Energy Committee for the Tom Cap presentation last night. Uh, we can expect their draft report in February, uh, and then they'll open the comment period.
And then on our, the next meeting dates, as Christine notes, the eighth and then the fifteenth, uh, and March first, as I spoke to uh Jessica Riley about doing a workshop with the school committee on new school building. And we look to schedule something after February vacation. So I don't know what you guys' schedule is like the week of the twenty-eighth, which is the week after February vacation. Um, she didn't give me any particular dates, we're meeting on the first. But that's the week after that, so I don't think you have to give me an answer now.
So the only thing I want to put on the table is I am still pushing us to have a public hearing. We've now pushed it out two months. Of, so my first, my first reaction was that we should target having a public hearing, assuming we do it on a date of one of our meetings, that we should do it on March first. If we're gonna have that workshop with the school committee in the last week of April or February or something like that, then it probably not, it, it would be better probably to target the date for that meeting after that workshop, um, primarily to figure out whether the school committee wants to join us in that public hearing or not. I think they should, but basically, all of the feat, all the, the, the limited feedback I've gotten back from school committee so far is that it has not been something that they expressed strong interest in doing. I think it's a really important thing for us to do. Uh, as I said, it would be, I think, better for us to do it in joint effort with the school committee, but if that doesn't happen, I think it's still important for us to have that conversation in public, so.
Okay, well, I think that should be an item to discuss the workshop.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Put that on the agenda, so that'll give us some time to frame up what the issues will be.
Yep.
To discuss at the workshop, and that can be one of them. So, um, I, we're, we're probably gonna need our meeting on the first, um. But if you could look at your calendars for those other dates, might Christine know when the work, and Christine, you can work with.
I'll work for Jess on.
Jess on, cleaning up the date that works, um.
Uh huh.
On that, um, and then.
Talking about the week of February twenty-eight for that?
That's, that's right.
That's right.
All right, selectmen reports, Pete.
I actually ended up going to uh a couple sessions of the Mass Municipal Association's annual meeting, which uh I wasn't gonna attend when it was in person, but they changed it to about three weeks apparently before the in-person session to make it a virtual meeting. So I did go to the uh annual meeting sessions that were, were on. It's always very instructive, I think, and, and um sort of inspiring actually too, to listen to the speakers. Uh, we get to hear very good speakers. Uh, we, we got to hear from uh Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Polito. We heard from both Senator Warren and Senator Markey. Um. I also went to the um, uh, Mass Selectments Association Annual Meeting, which was the next day, Saturday, last Saturday. Um, and they, they had a presentation on how to, how to, what's gonna happen with virtual meetings. Um. I did, I was at the Tom Cap uh meeting last night, and even though I'd seen the sausage getting made on that, I was very impressed with with the final product that the uh people from the energy committee came up with for that presentation. Um. I'm hoping that that'll get put onto uh, uh, some sort of YouTube or something, so that people can, can look at that, uh. Or maybe just click on a link on the town website or something of that sort to be able to see that. Very thoughtful uh presentation. I was very impressed with the graphics, actually, the uh, the, the slides that people had. Um, that I, I attended a very interesting uh M Cap meeting, which is the Medfield Cares About Protection. It was actually run by three high school kids. Uh, clearly very talented high school kids, uh, who talked about uh the, the prevention issues that they see uh in town. Um. Just fascinating. Uh, uh. And then finally, uh, I went to a Medfield Foundation uh meeting. We're working on doing an event uh in May. And I was at that uh just before this meeting, so that's it.
Just uh, and my comment, I also, I guess we all three of us were on the uh Tom Cap meeting la, uh, last night. Uh, I thought it was a good meeting. In particular, the one thing I walked away with is that I thought the six priorities that they had were a good set of priorities. Uh, and uh, so what I've seen so far seemed uh to be headed in a good direction. The questions that they wound up getting were kind of interesting for me because they were not, I think the original intent was to have people ask questions about the plan. Uh, but in fact, they got an awful lot of questions from people about various environmental actions that they could be taking, which tells me that there's uh, the, the energy committee's focus on education is probably well-placed. And, and I think there's some appetite for that. Uh, then on the other committees or subcommittee that I'm involved with is community choice aggregation. We have not met, uh, but Bill Masaro, I just have to acknowledge, is keeping that entire subcommittee busy answering his questions. Uh, and so uh, thanks for the interest in uh the, the yeah, the, the email traffic has been high over the last week.
Just trying to ensure that when they do the public outreach and education, that the questions are answered, people understand what's.
Absolutely. So that's all I had. I was out of town for a good part.
And I already mentioned our, the, the Tom Cap last night for most of it anyway. Fire in the veins. And uh, well, if, if you are replacing the oven, we've got some advice on how to do that, so we'll. There was an electrical, there was an electrical fire though, so it's glad to see that one. That goes. We'll, we'll see. I didn't see ovens on there.
We never pinned him down when those new rates go into effect.
Well, the first appointment I could get from one place was beginning of March, so I didn't. And then we are, we have collective bargaining schedules, uh, session scheduled, um, on Friday, the fire, um, you know, probably one, another one scheduled. That continues to pace. It's still my goal to get those done before I leave and do this in ordinary course and not have retro pay and have the contracts done in advance. We'll see what happens with that. Um. All right, I think that's all we have, nothing informational. And I declare that we need to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase exchange lease for by every property and uh, for the purpose of conducting strategy sessions in preparation for negotiation of non-union personnel. Fire chief, conducting, I have both of these discussions in a public session. It would be detrimental to the negotiating position of the town.
I move that the Medfield Board of Selectmen go into executive session for the following purposes. To consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body and the chair so declares as he has. And to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of public body and the chair so declares as he has. And that the open session will not reconvene at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second.
Good, uh, Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Me?
Hi.
And Mr. Kuchy, hi. Good night, everybody.